One nation, under God, indivisible, limiting just as all.
Well, we have kind of a dual, uh, practice, if you may, to start with this group.
Stuff first. In the past week, our, um, community lost two, uh, very important people who, uh, undeniably left a lasting impact in our city. One was a counselor at North High, Chris Wiley, who worked with so many young people to get them encouraged and prodded in the, in a positive direction in their lives. And the second was David Jacobson, um, uh, who was the managing partner of Cutac Rock Law Firm at a time when the firm really created a national model for diversity and inclusion, uh, for civic charitable involvement in our city. And so we want to take a moment to think about them if we could right now. Thank you. And on a positive note, I was, I heard over lunch that the little soccer team has all made it out of the cave in Thailand. So hopefully that news report is true and, and we can celebrate their safety. So, thank you.
An affidavit publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting, and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of the legislative chambers.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this meeting of the Omaha City Council. The council thanks you all for being here today. Uh, as a courtesy, as a courtesy to those in attendance, I would ask you to turn off or mute any of your electronic devices. Madam Clerk?
Item six, an ordinance to rezone the property located at 3021 North 72nd Street from R 435 District to R 5 District. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda, item number six is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon.
All right, name and address for the record.
Uh, Alvin O'Carrikey, 11610 Burt Street.
Okay, and you're a proponent?
Correct.
Okay.
Um, actually, the potential buyer, I've been working with the seller to try to finalize the, the terms of our sale on this, on this property. And essentially, one of my requirements was to get it rezoned to an R 5. We've been working with Eric England, um, in the Planning Department to, um, you know, obviously went through the process, had it, had our prior meetings before, before this request was put in. And, uh, so yes, I appreciate the recommendation for approval. I'm working towards trying to put, uh, a couple of duplexes on there. And this was obviously one of the requirements, um, for it to be properly zoned for the few units.
Okay. All right, thank you. And you'd be here for any questions if we have any?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard on item number six? Are there any opponents to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve item six. There are no lights. Roll call.
Pauls, Palermo, Harding, Jerem, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item six is approved, six to zero. Item seven, a resolution to approve the special use permit application submitted by Dave Palladino for a major amendment to a special use permit to allow convenient storage in a CC district with a waiver of section 55 dash 366 height for 125-foot-tall flagpole located at 20800 West Dodge Road. Planning Board recommends approval. Planning Department recommends denial.
Public hearing on agenda, item number seven is today. Proponents, please.
My name is Dale Clyman's. I work for Dave Palladino and Dino Storage. Address 2702 Douglas. And I'm here to, in support of this, uh, this, uh, application. And, um, I'm ready to answer any questions. And I'm looking forward to, to building something pretty cool in West Omaha.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard?
Hello, my name is Mark Vondrasik, 112 North 30th, South 37th Street, excuse me, Omaha, Nebraska. Uh, Mr. Palladino has a lot of billboard space with which he likes to share his opinions on things. And a lot of them unfortunately are, uh, religious in nature, or they look down on the poor, or they have opinions about women, uh, that I would not say are modern in any fashion or progressive. So I don't think, if this flagpole is going to be used for anything other than an American flag, I would also recommend a no vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Is there a motion? Oh, uh, Mr. Brink, Mr. Harding.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a, a late comment. I was gonna suggest to, um, when someone asked me about this over the weekend, I, I know that Mr. Palladino said that it would be for the American flag and Nebraska flag. And I, I wanted to remind him, we have, you know, Creighton and, and UNO in town as, as well. But, um, I know that's, that's what he proposed, so I'll be in support of this. And with that, I'll, uh, make a motion to approve.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve item seven. There's a couple of other lights. Mr. Pauls.
Thank you, Mr. President. There is one flag in my district that sits up even much higher, as I found out today, uh, basically off 108th and, or off of the interstate, quite a bit higher. So that tells me if we're doing it for one, why not another. And I would suggest any other business, if, if this does pass, you think about this also. Because this is good advertising for your business. Because most of us, when we see the flag, we are heartfelt about it. Uh, I probably would have been even much more supportive of this if this kind of money had been spent on most of the high schools, so they could have a larger flag. Because I think, uh, that way it would be dispersed throughout the city. Uh, you know, I, I think it's a great idea to have the, a large flag. Uh, I do question though, that, uh, since the Planning Department did deny it, uh, that there's a reason why. So I think this opens the door, though, and I'm welcoming any other, if this does pass, any other business to do the same, to show your spirit of, uh, United States of America. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Palermo.
Thank you, President Gray. If I could, is it Dale? Could you come back up, please? So, uh, just so I'm clear, um, there was a mention of the American flag, which is great. I totally agree with that. Love it, especially as a veteran. There was a mention of another flag, the Nebraska flag. So, I guess, do you have any other intentions of flying any other flags? Because, um, it might sway my decision.
Intentions, I'd say no, at this point. But would we be opposed to a Nebraska flag or a UNO flag or Creighton flag? Of course not. We just do not want to build a flag and then fly any kind of commercial advertising or name recognition at all. We just want this to be a public service, a public good. And, um, involving our local sports teams, I think, is in vain with that. And, um, we hope that that passes. But we wouldn't want to limit it if, we're not trying to limit it. We've just mentioned the two flags at this point. And, um...
Okay.
That's where we're at right now.
Thank you. And then just a question for law. Mr. Kratz?
Paul Kratz, City Attorney.
So if we were to approve this today, based on, basically, the, the height of the pole, could this person fly any flag they possibly wanted on this flagpole without any kind of amendments?
There's no restrictions as to what type of flag he could fly. No certain.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jerem.
Um, I want to point here, to my knowledge...
The, uh, I'll, I'll get to you in a second, Dale. I'll, I'll promise I'll let you say what you want to say. But, uh, if you could just have a seat for a second. Um, just so people out in the audience here today, or those watching know, the applicant has the right within the code to build a 75-foot flagpole without having to come to the council and fly whatever flag, um, he wishes to fly with presumably whatever message his First Amendment rights, he feels he wishes to choose, to use. In this case, with no restriction, given, um, the applicant's messaging throughout the city, which in some cases has been offensive to others, I would, I would be concerned that allowing a special use permit to have an increased visibility over which, that which the law allows, would be something to be concerning to me. So I would have no problem if this were limited just to the US flag. Old Glory hangs in the front of my house, by my front door. Love the American flag. Um, but I, I just have concerns that this, not only with this applicant, but then we have a slippery slope of, of every business in the city who think, then thinks that this becomes the, the means of promoting their own business, rather than complying with the law, which is pretty generous on 75 feet. I mean, I don't know if any of you ever tried climbing a 75-foot tree or pole, but it's, it's pretty far up there. Um, so that would be the way I, I think about this. This is wide open as it comes to us. I would generally probably be okay if it was just the US flag and had that restriction on it. But I, I just don't see a wide-open permit.
Thank you. Mr. Pauls.
Thank you. Uh, Dave from Planning?
Yeah, Dave Fanslaw, City Planning.
Uh, Dave, I have a question, because I think you know the flag I'm talking about. And that is considerably higher than, uh, the one, the one that's being proposed to us. Now, how did that come about?
The flag that you're referring to on 108th, I think it's John Gault Boulevard...
Right.
Or thereabouts, um, is there by the way of a ZBA waiver, a Zoning Board of Appeals waiver.
Okay. And am I wrong? It's, it's, it's much higher than the, the pole that we're proposing today?
I can't speak to the exact height. I know the flag is, is pretty large, so...
Yeah, and it's the, uh, top of a building, so it has to be. Okay, and that, that was permitted. Do you, uh, is that what I'm hearing from you?
Well, it wasn't, it was not code compliant. So for that applicant to place that flag at that location, they needed a zoning board of appeals waiver, which they received.
Okay, they did, I'm assuming they did, or it probably wouldn't be up there.
Correct.
So if any business wanted to do that, if this is a special use permit, that's the reason why it's coming in front of us?
Correct. Because the, the use at the site requires a special use permit, this would be an amendment to that use permit.
Okay. So if I'm a business, because I'm sure we have other businesses out there. And I commend the idea of flying, uh, the, the American flag, especially at schools. But, so if I'm a business out there, I would not have to come in front of the council for, quote, I'm saying, uh, permission. I could go where? If I wanted to put a flag in?
Well, I think there's probably multiple answers to that question. If you're within the code, you get a building permit and you install the flagpole and you fly the flag. If it's in a mixed-use development agreement, or a district, or something that requires a conditional use permit by the Planning Board, or a special use permit by the City Council, then those avenues would have to be followed. And if it is, exceeds code in a mixed-use development agreement, it would come to council. And a special use permit, it would come to council. A conditional use permit would be, uh, Planning Board approval. If none of those situations existed, then like the one on 108th and John Gault Boulevard, if it is in excess of the code, and again, none of those other situations apply, then it would go to the Zoning Board of Appeal. Because staff cannot sign a permit that's not code compliant.
So there is, uh, there are several avenues to accomplish, uh, this adventure if you wanted to, is what you're telling me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Thank you. Mr. Jerem.
Dale, I forgot to call you back up. You had something that you wanted to say. I promised you, I'll just say it.
It was off of what the lawyer mentioned. I, I, I thought, and I'm, I'm going to defer, he's, he's correct, I'm sure. But I was informed that we could not fly anything, that we, we could only restrict it to a, a, a US flag. We could not fly, um, our commercial or anything commercial, because it would count as a sign. And it would go against our sign ordinances and, and quantities. And, and we, um, so therefore, we're not going to fly anything but a, a US flag or a Nebraska flag. At this point, that's what we intend to do, is only a US flag or a Nebraska flag.
Is that what you want to say?
That was it. I just wanted to...
Okay. I would make a substitute motion to approve, subject to a restriction, that it be a, a US flag only at the dimensions in the application.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to...
Well, what about the motion that's on the floor?
Well, this is a substitute motion. So the substitute motion would come first. Am I right, Mr. Kratz?
Yes, sir.
Okay. The substitute motion would come first. Uh, so if it's been moved and seconded to approve, subject to there being just the American flag? Okay. Um, let me, uh, before we take the vote, Mr. Fanslaw, can I ask you a question? The Planning Department recommended denial. Can I hear your reasons for that?
Sure, yeah. Dave Fanslaw, City Planning. Um, the property is zoned CC, Community Commercial, which allows for 60-foot-high structures, which a flagpole is. There's also a provision in the code that allows for those structures to exceed the height limitation by 25%, which would be 75 feet. Um, given the elevation of this site and, and where it sits in our jurisdiction, um, came into, we took that into consideration as well. It's, it's at one of the highest points in our jurisdiction. We felt that 75 feet was, um, that the code allows was high enough. And, um, we didn't think that going to 125 feet would set a good precedent for future cases.
And I, I, let me, let me say, just as a comment of my own, I, I, I agree with that. I wouldn't be, I'm not going to be supporting either one of the, um, either the substitute motion or the original one, because I think we need to stick with the code. Um, so that'll be my position. And, um, that's what I'll take. The substitute motion is up first to, um, have an American flag only on that flagpole. There are no more lights. Roll call.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
No.
Um, item seven is approved, five to one. Item eight, an application to consider a Class C liquor license for Pollo de Oro LLC, doing business as Pollo de Oro, located at 2646 Y Street. A's communication and opposition.
Public hearing on, on agenda, item number eight is today. Proponents, please.
Hi, Alma Diaz, um, 2646 Y Street, Pollo de Oro.
Kate Turner, 110 South 184th Court, Council for, um, Pollo de Oro.
And you're just here to answer any questions who we might have?
Yes.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Palermo.
President Gray, uh, you're new to the neighborhood, so welcome. A couple colleagues of mine, President Gray, Councilwoman Jerem, we drove by today. We would have stopped, but we were running out of time. We had to be here by two, so. But next time, we will. So when we do stop in, tell me, what, what should we order? What's your specialty?
We're specializing in grilled chicken. So we have this great marinade. We marinate 24 hours in advance. So we have our chicken soaked in a marinade, and we slow cook it every morning. So that's been the main, the main entree that we've been selling. But we also have tacos, burritos, and sandwiches, and all sorts of stuff. So kind of a quick serve, kind of for lunch and stuff. So we have a lot of, uh, companies like UPS and the Kroc Center across the street. So they're happy that we're in business, right, close by. So they just kind of called in their orders and, you know, we have everything ready really soon. So they like that.
Great, well, thank you. Move to approve.
Just moved and seconded to approve item eight. There are no further lights. Roll call.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item eight is approved, six to zero. Item nine, an application to consider a Class C K liquor license for Rath Skeller Beer House LLC, doing business as Rath Skeller Beer House, located at 4524 Farnham Street.
Public hearing on agenda, item number nine is today. Proponents, please.
Yes. Good afternoon, Mr. President, members of the council. Sean Kelly, 2804 87th Avenue. Pretty day on behalf of the applicants. Uh, you see them beside me. We're happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Jerem.
Yes, Chaz, if you want to come up. And I don't want, mean to cut out your partner.
Mr. Jerem, yes. Uh, Chaz Klein, 4216 Hickory Street.
I know a little bit about it. Why don't you share with us what your concept is and when you'll be open?
Uh, I've had the unique opportunity to travel quite a bit across the United States. And, uh, I've always been interested in the, uh, German beer halls. And the ones I've been to, uh, have always been large and big, and in warehouse districts. Well, we don't have much of that. But we have some. And, and none of those spots kind of really fit what I was trying to get done. And so about five years, I've been planning this. Uh, so we're gonna be in the old Three Cheers Building, if you're familiar with that, some of those older folks. And, uh, we're taking it into, uh, trying to get the theme of a Rath Skeller. And Rath, in German, is council, and Keller is basement. So Rath Skeller. Uh, out at the German American Society, they have a, a basement, uh, bar down there called the Rath Skeller. And so we'll be primarily focused in on German beers, uh, European beers and German food. Uh, try and get as much as you can. We won't have a, a footer or fryer. So we're out of that side of the element, which is good. I don't really enjoy doing that, too much of that. But, uh, we'll have small plates and, you know, charcuterie boards and sausages and pretzels. And, uh, Oktoberfest is coming around, so that'll probably be our, our big coming-out party. And we've worked the neighborhood and talked with all of our folks around us. And, uh, we've been, uh, been met with a lot of really good cheer. So, uh, we're looking very much forward to it. And if there's anything I can answer for you, I'd be happy to, uh, stop by. We're, uh, finishing our interior construction right now. And we've had an opportunity to, uh, actually, fortunate enough to find a lot of repurposed product, as we see so much in all these new developments. But, uh, one of the things that we were able to get our hands on was, uh, one of the buildings that was torn down, Blackstone, the house that used to be next to where, uh, Dundee Bank, is, we've been able to repurpose and use their lap siding. So, uh, that's a wood that we have, that we've covered the, part of the bar with. So, uh, that's been fun sourcing all those products. And, and I haven't had to do this in a while. So you kind of reach out and start finding, you know, people that you used to know that were in the trades. And, and it's been a lot of fun doing it. So we're having fun.
Well, it sounds exciting and, and, um, happy to support it. Wish you luck.
Yeah, thank you. Motion approved. Thank you.
Moved and seconded to approve item nine. There are no further lights. Roll call.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item nine is approved, six to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 10, an application to consider a Class C liquor license for High Peak Asian Restaurant LLC, doing business as High Peak Asian Restaurant, located at 333 North 78th Street.
Public hearing on agenda, item number 10 is today. Proponents, please.
My name's Laura Song, uh, 29, 29, 29 North 55th Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68104.
Thank you. Are there any other pro, and you're here to answer any questions we might have, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve item 10. There are no lights. Roll call.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 10 is approved, six to zero.
Thank you.
Item 11, an application to consider, in addition to Aldi Inc., Kansas, doing business as Aldi Number 75, located at 3433 North 90th Street, for an addition to their Class C liquor license for an area approximately 25 feet by 15 feet to the existing building.
Public hearing on agenda, item number 11 is today. Proponents, please.
Uh, Nick Bezoni, 225 North 12th Street.
Here to answer any questions?
Yes.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve item 11. There are no lights. Roll call.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 11 is approved, six to zero. Item 12, a resolution to grant approval to EHPV Lottery Service to operate a Big Red Keno Satellite Location at Sunken Ship Investments LLC, doing business as the Broke Down Palace, located at 8805 Maple Street.
Public hearing on agenda, item number 12 is today. Proponents, please. Oh, we're gonna lay this over.
Yeah.
Okay. August 28th? Are there any, if anyone is here to testify either for or against item number 12, if you could come to the mic, please. If not, the public hearing will be continued on August 28th. Is there a motion? Okay. Moved and seconded to continue the public, to, to layover and continue the public hearing on August 28th. There are no lights. Roll call.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Consent agenda. Any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed, unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
The public hearing on agenda items numbers 13 through 17 were held on June 26, 2018. My understanding is Councilmember Palermo, you'd like to remove 13 and 14. Is that accurate? Okay. If we can remove items 13 and 14 and vote on 17, I'm on 15 through 17, if they can get a motion for those, please. Moved and seconded to approve items 15 through 17. There are no lights. Roll call.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Items 15 through 17 are approved, six to zero. And if there's no objections, we can take numbers 13 and 14 together.
Yes.
Number 13, an ordinance levying a special tax on assessment in all lots and pieces of real estate within Road Maintenance District 745 dash 27 in the City of Omaha to cover the cost of constructing and improving South 94th Street from West Center Frontage Road south to its terminus north of Rock Brook Park by asphalt overlay. Item 14, an ordinance levying a special tax on assessment in all lots and pieces of real estate within Road Maintenance District 745 dash 28 in the City of Omaha to cover the cost of constructing and improving Oak Street from South 94th Street to its terminus by asphalt overlay.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved and seconded to approve items 13 and 14. There are no lights. Roll call.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo. Harding.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Items 13 and 14 are approved, five to one.
The public hearing on agenda items numbers 18 through 35 are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by your name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent. And I don't want to close the public hearing without talking about item number 32. And I'd like for a couple of folks in the audience here to please come to the microphone and talk about, uh, a special street naming that we're going to do. And I don't want to close the public hearing without talking about item number thirty-two, and I'd like for a couple of folks in the audience here to please come to the microphone and talk about a special street naming that we're going to do.
My name is Portia Vivian Love. My address is 2035 Drake Court Walk, Omaha, Nebraska, 68102. I am Preston Haynes Love's daughter.
My name is Richie Love of North Carolina, and I am Preston Love's son, youngest son.
All right. We just wanted to come and just show support for the fact that a street has been named after him and to thank you for your consideration and to let you know that there'll be a lot of festivities and maybe some of you will be there.
I just wanted to say, if I can have my turn, I just wanted to say, Preston Love Senior passed away a few years ago. He was an individual. When I was doing my television show, I closed my Christmas show every year with Preston Love, and Richie plays very well as well, and I know you're going to be performing this weekend, I think, at the Love Jazz and Arts Center on Friday and Saturday.
Friday and Saturday.
If you want to hear good saxophone playing and a great band, that's the man you want to hear this coming weekend. But his dad, Preston Love Senior, was considered by many in the jazz world to be the second best. I guess the first best alto saxophone player was Charlie Parker, but the second best alto saxophone player was Preston Love Senior. So we're naming a street after him, and I guess that's this Friday.
This Friday, six o'clock.
This Friday at six o'clock. So I would love for council members to be there if you can make it, but you certainly ought to get a chance to listen to Richie if you get a chance, so I just wanted to make sure that you all had a chance to.
I'd like to say, oh, I'm sorry, cut you off, that we truly, truly appreciate the council having this wonderful honor for him. He would truly be ecstatic, and we thank you so much. We thank you very much.
Yeah, and Mr. Our council vice president, Mr. Jerem, reminded me that his book is still in our public library, if you want to get Preston Love's, Preston Love Senior's book as well.
It's actually a pretty good book. I wasn't going to read it when he gave it to me. I thought, you know, this is Dad's book, but then I read it and was like, yeah. Would like to just say that, you know, something came to mind while you were talking about him and the day that they called and said that he was not going to live through the night. The first call I made was to be, I knew that he would handle the news report in a very classy and just a beautiful manner, and he did.
Thank you. That was my buddy, though. That was my buddy. Thank you all. I just wanted to, just wanted to take a little time for the council to get to know you all.
Luis Jimenez, 518 North 40th Street. Wanted to speak on the thirty-second. I just have a question. How was this idea to name the street submitted to the council? Curious, was it through a committee or was it through a council member?
It was through, well, it was through, it was through, I was the one that was kind of responsible for making sure that Preston Loves Junior got through the right, got to the right people to make sure it got done.
So you helped them go through the process?
I helped them get through it, yes.
But so wasn't through a council member?
I am a council member.
Okay. I understand now. Thank you, Mr. President.
I thought I was. Was that, yes. Did you want to come up, Ben? Yes.
Sure can.
We haven't closed the public hearing yet.
Thank you. Ben Salazar, 1703 Ontario Street. Thank you, Ben. I'm here to make some comments on item number thirty-five. As some of you know, I've got a complaint on file with HUD regarding the allocation of the $700,000, which I think also is partnered with $300,000 from CDVG, as I understand. The allocation in total will be a million dollars for Step Up. And while I have a complaint pending, making the allegation, actually repeating an allegation that I made in 2013, using the same criteria, the same basis, which is discrimination against Hispanic youth, especially Hispanic youth in South Omaha, I'm actually here to support this allocation of money in the spirit of partnership, because I've supported many of the efforts in North Omaha for many, many years, not only for this program but for others. And I know the history of how this originated. So I've been very supportive of anything that helps North Omaha and especially the youth of North Omaha, and I continue to support their efforts. This is a great program. The problem is, it's a program that was originated to help North Omaha youth and to combat crime and gangs and those kinds of things that plague not only North Omaha but other parts of the city as well. So I support the program. I support the mission of that program. The problem that I've seen, however, is that while this is, and again, I laud the efforts, this is originally intended for North Omaha and African-American youth. Over the years, what we've lacked is the inclusion of Hispanic youth. Now, we may not have the same level of gang activity or maybe even violence in South Omaha, but nonetheless, the problems persist. The same kinds of things that nag African-American youth also impact Latino youth as well. And being a former Latino youth myself, I'm very familiar with some of those problems of poverty, of despair, of having teachers that maybe don't really care about you, especially if you're in the middle of the pack academically, figuring you're not going to make it anyway, you're just going to be a blue collar worker. So they don't pay much attention to you, and I know that's true in North Omaha as well. But every child, regardless of where they sit in terms of poverty, whether it's one parent or two parents at home, whether they live in North or South Omaha, every child is a nugget of a soul, has great potential to achieve. I've seen them in my own neighborhood where I grew up, kids like myself, who were never expected to go into college, let alone graduate high school. But I have friends, peers, who got PhDs, who became doctors, have master's degrees, made great achievements academically and in the business world, despite the fact that their counselors never encouraged them, because they were Chicano kids, kids from parents who worked out in the fields, worked in factories. But we knew among ourselves, these are pretty sharp kids. We know these kids are pretty sharp kids, and every one of these kids deserves an opportunity. We didn't have that opportunity all the time for us. Took me five years just to get a college. So I came out of high school with a hammer in my hand and pounding nails in a furniture shop for two years, which was very depressing. And another year driving a pickup truck, two years in the military, before I finally got to the university. Only by a quirk of fate, and maybe it's fate for many of us. I mean, so I support the network and the work that they do, but I'm here to tell you that we need something comparable for the Latino youth, because this is a big game. It's a big, huge endeavor, and I have maintained that this is not just a program that ought to be designed for North and South Omaha. This should be a universal program for all youth, because I can't believe that in a city this size and this wealthy, I can't provide employment opportunities for every young man and every young woman in Omaha regardless of race or ethnicity. But if we're going to start, we ought to start in North and South Omaha. So while I hold on to the validity of my complaint because of the disparity in numbers, and we'll see how that pans out, I'm here to urge all of you to keep that in mind, that for South Omaha, we can make a great program, not just aimed at Latino youth, but youth in general, starting in South Omaha. So I support the network, and I'll do anything I can to partner with them and help them as long as they extend the hand of partnership with us. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak before we vote here? Oh, there's none. Cap, Deputy Chief?
Good afternoon, council members. Scott Gray, Deputy Chief, Omaha Police Department, 505 South 15th Street, here on behalf of Chief Schmodder to offer our support for item thirty-five, the Step Up program. As you all know, there's several root causes of crime, particularly violent crime, and one of those is poverty and unemployment, and we believe that Step Up program plays a key role in addressing that problem with youth unemployment and just having something to do in the summertime. We've seen tangible results in the summer months as far as a drop in violent crime that we believe is at least part, in part, due to programs like Step Up. And Step Up has certainly grown over the years, got more kids involved. I mean, there's, I agree with Mr. Salazar that without some hope, that kids just kind of languish in despair and don't have much to do and get themselves down the wrong path during the summer months. And I think it's key to have programs like Step Up that have been so effective in getting those kids involved in employment opportunities, learning just the soft skills of what a job requires, and just being exposed to different professional atmospheres. I've had the pleasure the last three years of being able to speak to all the 15-year-olds involved in the program, and Councilman Gray's been there as well. They kind of get a day where they learn from different parts of government. And it's really been good for me from the law enforcement side to be exposed to those kids, and we break up into groups and we're able to talk to them, and they get exposure to me, and for many of them, it's the first time they've ever talked face to face with a police officer in kind of a positive environment. And they get asked me, this last one, we said two weeks ago, they had some pretty tough questions for me, and we always work through those things, but I think it's a great program, and we certainly offer our support. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers before we end the public hearing?
Good afternoon. Ivan Gilreath, 5051 South 22nd Street, President/CEO Boys and Girls Club, and I'm here to speak on behalf of the Step Up program. We've been a partner in the program since its beginning, and it ties right into the mission of the Boys and Girls Clubs of serving the youth who need us the most. And right now, we serve Step Up programs in three communities, North Omaha, South Omaha, and West Side, and so the poverty and the needs are all over the city, and we see the value of the program. Right now, we've got 142 youth in the program, 60 of those North Omaha, and then we've got 40 at South and 40 at West Side, and really diverse groups of young people to speak to Mr. Salazar. We have 20 young Latino children in the program over in South Omaha. That's up from a handful when we started five years ago, and all the kids are special. We've got them involved in, you know, career exploration, resume writing, mock interviews, being able to tour major corporations in the city to learn what it takes to get to the next level. And without this program, these young people would not have the opportunity to do these things. And so it's a very successful program. It's a very needed program. I encourage us to continue expanding the program because there's still much more need in all parts of the community, and I wholeheartedly endorse this program going forward.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other speakers before we, before I close the public hearing?
Good afternoon, Mr. President. John Ewing, Douglas County Treasurer. I wanted to stand in support of the Step Up program. I'm a retired deputy chief also with the Omaha Police Department, and I'm actually a product of the Comprehensive Employment Training Agency, which was a program back in the 1970s, very similar to the Step Up program. And that's what we originally modeled the Step Up program after when we developed it about 10 years ago. Part of my time with this Comprehensive Employment Training Program was actually working at the Omaha Police Department, and I ended up having a very successful career there. Worked there for 24 years, nine months, one day and seven minutes, not that I was counting. And I would like to say I think I paid back the citizens of this community as I've continued to serve for a total of now almost 36 and a half years, and I believe the programs like that actually pay back dividends to the community. This program has helped reduce crime during the summer, which are the busiest months normally for police departments around the country, and I believe it's reduced violence both in North and South Omaha. And certainly, I know we've made efforts to be as inclusive as we can between North and South Omaha and making sure that we have young people across races and ethnicities so that we can have an impact on this community. So I would appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
Good afternoon, Mr. President, members of the city council. Thomas Warren, President/CEO, Urban League of Nebraska, 3040 Lake Street. I too am here to speak on behalf of the Step Up program. We have also been a partner since the inception of the program. As opposed to being an actual worksite, we serve as coaches for about 120 of the youth who are participating in the program. We case manage those youth at work sites throughout the city, exposing them to real-life work experiences. We administer the job readiness component, which is a very intensive training on workplace etiquette. And what we hear from our employer partners oftentimes, youth and young adults are not quite ready for the workplace in terms of having those soft skills necessary to not just, you know, not just work but thrive in a work environment. And so our role is to provide the support daily, checking on, making sure that they're present, that they have a proper attitude, and that they're productive in those environments. I too share in terms of the experiences from a couple of previous speakers, not only the current but former law enforcement officer, that I know the direct correlation between this program and the impact that it has on reducing our crime rate. I benefit from having a relationship with my colleagues around the United States, urban America, urban cities throughout this country, and we're unique in a sense that crime has down during the summer months, when in fact is generally a busier time. The relationship between the community and the law enforcement department is favorable in part due to the working relationship that we have. And so it's more than just a jobs program. It certainly enhances that lived experience for our youth and young adults. I think it's a benefit to our community, and I would encourage your continued support. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers before I?
Good afternoon, council. Albervadas, Executive Director at the Latino Center of the Midlands, 4821 South 24th Street. And I'd like to first thank you guys, and particularly Vinnie. We had a nice cleanup this, yesterday, across 24th Street, which was really nice to see some cleanup happening on South 24th Street, so thank you so much for that. I'm speaking in behalf of supporting a Step Up program. The Latino Center of the Midlands has been a partner for almost since the inception. Once they started going to South Omaha, we were on board, and without a doubt, there is room to improve in some of the numbers of Latino students to be in the program, and we're really excited about that opportunity to work with the rest of the partners in order to see those numbers increase over the next, over the coming years. Our experience with the program, it really is, with the Latino students that we work with, they don't come from households where necessarily they have professional parents, and what Step Up program is able to do is provide the, kind of the reality check of, this is what it's like to work at First National Bank. This is what it's like to work at CHI, where they are then served with mentors that are able to help walk them through those next-level professional careers that they may not have the support in their household to be able to guide them through what it's like to work in a professional career. So that's one of the biggest advantages that I see with the population that we serve in the Step Up program, and I'm not a law, I don't have a background in law enforcement. My background is in education, and this is the most practical form of application, which is learning on the job, OJT, on-the-job training. And to get 15, 16, 17, 18-year-olds to do that, it's just a great privilege for us to be able to work with young people as a host site and then also employing some of the kids. So, thank you.
Thank you. With that, if I could make a couple of comments of my own, please, and it's not directed And it's not directed at anyone here, in here as much as it is directed at the business community. As the Step Up program and another effort that I know Councilmember Palermo is, is attempting to engage in, all of those efforts are good, but they're not going to be what they should be if our businesses don't step up. Right now, we have, what is it, Willie, about 110 businesses that, that, that have stepped up, and they are either providing employment or doing some other things. But we have a lot more businesses that could step up. And the numbers that we have, the numbers that we see this year, 700 are, are the individuals that we have in the program. But quite frankly, we had applications of nearly 1,200 young people, or 1,300 young people, something like that. So we're still, while we're filling the void in a really good way, that void can be increased, and we could have more people in any of the programs that we have around the city, if we could get the business community and others more involved in this effort. It's going to take all of us to reduce crime, to get our children educated, to keep, help them understand what the soft skills are that are needed in the community, if they want to work in various capacities in the community. We've got to make that happen. But I'm imploring and asking businesses in the community, I know it's a little late this year, but you could at least sign up this year and be ready to go next year. But I'm encouraging the business community, and this is, guess more to the people out in television land, as my former friend Gary Grenette would say, to those out in television land, especially the businesses that are watching, I would encourage you to think about what you, think about what contribution you might want to make to helping the, the jobs programs that exist in the city and specifically Step Up. So with that, unless there's any, any other comments, I was gonna close the public hearing. Willie, did you want to make a comment? Then I'm gonna close the public hearing.
Willie Barney, President of Empowerment Network, 2401 Lake Street. I wasn't going to stand, but I thought, first of all, I just want to thank the mayor's administration and her team, the planning department, and all of those that have been working with the grants division and everyone else to help us grow this program that the city council has helped us expand the last 10 years. The first four years of this program, it came out of the community out of an urgent need to, as been stated, to reduce gun violence. And I can tell you that since the time of this program and the partnerships with the police department and this council and the mayor's office, gun violence in the summer has been reduced by 80% in North Omaha, and likewise, I think it's 78% in South Omaha. So it is working. But the program has evolved well beyond reducing violence. We now have, with the support of the council, one of the largest, if not the largest, youth employment programs in the entire state of Nebraska. And now, we do have, we can always use more, councilmen, but we have businesses like CHI Health, American National Bank, First National Bank, First Data, Woodman Life, and others that are stepping up with the opportunities for our young people to get engaged. Every one of our young people participate in career interest assessments, job readiness assessments. They also have an individual development plan. So it's not just going to the job during the summer, but as they go back into the school district, they then have a plan to identify, is that the right career path? I'm also interested in entrepreneurship. So your investment, and I want the city to know, your investment is going to impact, and it has already impacted the youth in our community. As well as, we are committed to having a citywide program. I know there's been some comments about expanding. We have continued to expand in South, and continue to expand even in West Omaha. I'm excited in that we have already had some preliminary meetings with additional partners in South Omaha. We have PACE that has come on board. We've talked to the Latino Police Officers Association. We have Latino Center of the Midlands. We have others that have already come on board, Boys and Girls Club of the South, as you heard from Ivan Gilreath. So they've all committed to, again, double down and really get into, and we've also had some preliminary conversations with the South High Principal as well, Ruben Kano, and others that have committed to be a part of this process moving forward. But again, I just want to recognize and thank the mayor's administration. I want to thank the city council for your previous support and your support going forward. There's a major impact that's already occurred, and we know that will be even greater moving forward. But we are closing the skills gap. I just want to, again, emphasize, I have a whole presentation I can send to you, but our young people are getting a hands-on experience with engineering, construction, robotics, culinary, growing food, producing food. They're doing all types of things that never existed before. And this is primarily focusing on those youth that need it the most. So we greatly appreciate your support, and we look forward to working with you to grow this program, because there is an even greater need out there. By the recent data from UNO, there's about 1,000 youth in North and South Omaha. Even with the work we're doing right now, there's still about 1,000 out there that are unemployed during this, this time period. So with your additional support to grow this program, we can be, as we said many times before in front of the city council, we can be an example for the rest of the nation, that we can address these long-term issues of poverty, unemployment that have impacted our, our city, but we are making a difference. The data shows it, and most importantly, the families and students that have been positively impacted show it. Thank you again for your time.
Just one question, Willie. When does the mock city council meet?
The mock city council will be on Tuesday, August 2nd. That's an opportunity where we'll have 250, 300 of our 14 and 15-year-olds. They are beginning to work on their presentations. They are studying the city budget. And we give them an executive leadership opportunity. This will be our fourth year, where they come down and they present what they would like to see in the city, what recommendations they have on transportation, what they have on streets. So it's a great opportunity for them to be a part of what it takes to be a leader in the city of Omaha. So that will be on Tuesday, August 2nd. We invite any and all of you to participate and be a part of that.
Let me, let me also say that when I, when, a couple of weeks ago, Deputy Chief Gray and I had a chance to speak to these young people. And they were so well-versed on the budget, they knew things that I didn't know. So, and I hate to admit that publicly, but I had to go back and check a couple of numbers myself. I think it would be on August 2nd, I think it would be a good opportunity for you to really see what these 14 and 15-year-old people are engaged in, these young people are engaged in. So I would encourage you to attend. With that, the public hearing is closed.
Thank you.
Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Move to second to approve the consent agenda resolutions. There are no more lights. Roll call.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerome.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Items 18 through 35 are approved, six to zero. Item 36, an ordinance levying a special tax on assessment on certain lots, parts of lots, and pieces of real estate in the city of Omaha to cover the cost of clearing snow from sidewalks in District Number SWSR 2017-01.
Public hearing on agenda, item number 36 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item 37, an ordinance to approve the execution of a master agreement with Cox Wireless Access, providing for Cox's usage of street light poles and city right-of-way for microcell antennas.
Public hearing on agenda, item number 37 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any, oh, oh, proponents, I'm sorry.
Just here to answer questions. Cali Height, Cox Communications, 11505 West Dodge Street. Just here to answer questions.
Thank you.
Did you replace Nick?
No.
No, okay. Okay. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item 38, an ordinance approving redevelopment tax increment financing loan agreement with Saddle Creek 1011 LLC to implement the Saddle Creek 1011 Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Plan located northeast of Saddle Creek Road and Pacific Street in an amount up to $2,628,000.
Public hearing on agenda, item number 38 is today. Proponents, please.
Don Seaton, Omaha City Planning, and I'm available for any questions you have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item 39, an ordinance approving a redevelopment-
Sorry. Light, I'm sorry, Mr. Harding, I'm going too fast. Go ahead, Mr. Harding.
Mr. Jovan.
Oh, okay.
Mr. President, members of the council, Larry Jovan, 11440 West Center Road. I was simply letting you know that Deborah Christensen was, is here, and as well as myself, to answer any questions. But you've heard all of this before on the March 20th meeting, so this is just the last of it. Here for questions. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Harding.
That was the question you, that was, that was all you had?
Did I say that phrase?
Yeah, you did it, all right.
Actually, you were the first one you wanted.
Next item.
Item 39, an ordinance approving a redevelopment agreement with the Omaha Shelter for Homeless Trust for the redevelopment of the site located at the northwest corner of 16th and Nicholas Streets.
Public hearing on agenda, item number 39 is today. Proponents, please.
Hi, good afternoon. I'm Sue Morris. I'm President of Heritage Services and also President of the Omaha Shelter for Homeless Trust, and, but happy to answer any continued questions that you might have about this very important public-private partnership for our community.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item 40, an ordinance to approve a First Amendment to the business property lease with Serco Strategic Investments LLC for space on the first floor in the La Doye Landmark Building located at 1001 Farnham Street for operation of the Omaha Convention and Visitors Bureau's Visitor Information Center.
Public hearing on agenda, item number 40 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item 41, a motion by Councilmember Pauls to reconsider Resolution Number 445, a special use permit for Leslie Salvage Inc. to allow scrap and salvage services in a GI District for property located at 6202 Orchard Avenue.
That's just required as a second, right?
Correct.
Second.
Second. Okay, the roll call vote will take place at the July 17th, 2018 City Council Meeting.
Next item.
Non-action items, items 42 through 64 do not require public hearing or City Council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on future agenda for public hearing and/or vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda, as well as the date the item is expected to appear on the agenda for consideration.
Motion adjourned.
Sumoed.
Second, roll call.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerome.
Yes.
Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Meeting adjourned at 2:59.